Good afternoon, everyone. It's my pleasure to call the special county council meeting of Wednesday, April 20th, 2022, to order. This is the first time that we will have an in-person county council meeting where the warden is actually chairing it virtually, so we'll try our best to make it a smooth transition. As we gather this afternoon, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonquin people. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. I will now ask people to stand for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Mr. Morrow, roll call please.
Thank you, Warden. Councillor Bennett.
Here.
Thank you. Councillor Rose.
Present.
Councillor Donahue.
Here.
Thank you. Councillor Ema.
Present.
Councillor Grills.
Present.
Councillor Hunt.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Keller.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Love.
Present.
Councillor Lynch.
Here.
Councillor Murphy.
Here.
Councillor Pickett.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Rigger.
Present.
Warden Robinson.
Present.
Councillor Sweet.
Present.
And Councillor TJ. Thank you. That is a roll call. Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morrow. Is there any disclosure of community interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, I would ask Director Perkins if he would like to introduce our delegation from Watson and Associates, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you. So, good afternoon and all. Thank you for making it here for a special meeting. So, please allow me to introduce Mr. Gary Scanlon, a managing partner with Watson and Associates Economics Limited. Gary authors articles and presents on matters relating to the Development Charges Act, revenue alternatives to taxation, privatization of municipal services, municipal financing planning, and full cost pricing of water and wastewater services. He frequently appears before the local planning appeal tribunal, formerly the Ontario Municipal Board, and other tribunals on behalf of municipality. Gary holds a degree in economics from McMaster University and is a professional land economist. He is a member of the Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ontario, Toronto Association for Business and Economics, Ontario Public Works Association, and the Ontario Waterworks Association. Gary lives in Pushlink. He enjoys a smaller semi-urban community setting where he can get to know the other residents and enjoy the openness of the landscape. Please welcome Mr. Scanlon.
So, thank you. It's a pleasure to be before you today. I have been before many of the local municipality councils over the years, so it's a pleasure to see the representatives from those municipalities. I've been asked to put together a bit of a Development Charge 101 background, just to bring you, you know, give you the flavour for what this legislation provides for municipalities. It has been around for, and I'll show you in a minute, the long history, development charges or its forerunners, which were called lot levies, been around for 65 years. So, there is the piece of legislation, the Development Charges Act, has 75, 80 clauses and numerous sub clauses and two regulations which guide it, and then there's about 160, 165 OMB OLT case law, which really defines many of the minor attributes. So, it's not for the faint of heart, but it does, it is a matter which goes before the tribunal quite often in order to clarify and define the approach that we use. So, if I can move to the next slide, please? And again, please. So, I'm going to go through, as I say, a bit of the background, so you get a flavour for the, you know, how we've come to today. There's been many changes over the years. And then I'll go through some of the mechanics, and I hate to get into all the details, but you'll see that it's not just a number that's arisen from just on the back of a piece of paper. There's actually a fair amount of detail that has to go into it. We work in conjunction with staff, you know, from planning and then through public works, and if you've got a water and wastewater division, anyway, I'll show you the, there's about 20 eligible services, so we work with staff from each of those, potentially from those departments in order to assess their, the future capital needs. Next slide? And again, this is just all the details which I'll touch on. Next slide. Development charges have a specific purpose. They're to recover infrastructure, so they're not for day-to-day operating costs, paying staff salaries, paying for the heating, the lighting, stuff like that. It's specifically for infrastructure. And it's to recover, and that infrastructure is what is constructed, which will benefit both residential and non-residential growth. Now, it doesn't mean that you have to, some municipalities, I know, and as I show you some surveys at the end, not all municipalities adopt, they may have a residential, but they may reduce or not put in an industrial charge, but we still have to calculate it. But you have the flexibility on imposing it or reducing it, so there's a lot of flexibility for you as a council to guide the actual charge that's put in place. The second bullet talks about these costs are in addition to what a developing landowner will normally have to pay for. So, the legislation actually breaks infrastructure costs into two categories, one which is very localized cost. So, let's say within Renfrew or Armpryor, a subdivision, an individual is subdividing land and putting in lots, they're going to pay for the internal water mains, the sewers, the sidewalks, the streetlights, the roads. So, those internal costs, those very localized costs, are the developer's responsibility. But there's a section of the act that, Section 59, that says these are local services, and the municipality has to put a definition around them, so it's very clear what the developer's responsibilities are when they come forward to construct. The development charge normally picks up those costs that are, for the most part, outside of that subdivision. So, there's more, you know, collector roads potentially, arterial roads, turning lanes, intersections, streetlights, which may not only be adjacent to that development, but maybe where all of the traffic is collectively moving along, the traffic volumes reach a point where you have to expand, put streetlights, or do whatever. And similar, you have to expand water treatment plants, sewage treatment plants, build new arenas, you have parkland dedication, so you need to construct that land into a functional park, et cetera. So, those are the broader costs that we look at through the development charge. But we do have to work with staff in order to get a clear definition, what's the developer's responsibility, and what are we including in the development charge? Excuse me. Next slide, please? And again. So, you can see here, the Development Charges Act started originally under a couple of clauses that was in the Planning Act, and that arose in the mid-1950s. So, it's actually older than me, believe it or not, and so it's been around for a long time. So, for many years, and under the Planning Act, you could impose a charge when the lot was created. So, if you're severing a lot or you're doing lots by subdivision, you could then impose the charge when you created the lot. That's if you've ever heard the term lot levy, that's the development charge, but it was imposed under the Planning Act, and that's where it got the nickname Lot Levy. There was a numerous case law going before the OMB. My former partner, who retired about 10 years ago, Cam Watson, who created Watson, he did most of the hearings before the board on this legislation, so for the most part, he laid the groundwork for what we have today as the Development Charges Act. So, they, the province had weaved together all of that legislation to create the first Development Charges Act, which was put into place in 1989. It moved along for about eight years. There was a changeover in government, there was a refinement, and in 1997, there was a significant change to the piece of legislation. Number of services were removed, so to some extent, we went from having 100% cost recovery for growth down to in the range of 75 to 80%. You can see then, that lasted until 2016, so roughly about 20 years. And then, over the last couple of years, we've gone through significant changes in legislations that's affected the development charge. And you can see there's Bill 73, which arose in 2016, and then, just in the last year, you're all familiar with what started with Bill 108, which was a piece of legislation that was changing 16 other pieces of legislation, and then from that, we had the subsequent bills that affected the development charge. Now, I'll touch upon them briefly because I do have local municipalities who have bylaws, and I'll just briefly go through the changes that they're, when they're doing their next update, which is probably in the next, over the next two years, these are things they'll have to consider as a result. Can I go to the next slide, please? Yeah, and I just, I'm going to refer to the bill numbers because it's too difficult to say all of those words for the names of the acts, so we'll go through like that. Next slide, please. So, 73, Bill 73 was made a number of changes, so from what we had and worked with for 20 years, they brought in new definitions, they introduced new ineligible services, so they removed a little bit from what we could collect for. They were very specific in saying you can consider area-specific charges, so it just doesn't have to be across the whole municipality. We can isolate those costs into certain areas. They gave back waste diversion, which was removed, they, there's, we have to provide a commentary on asset management, they changed the way we do transit services, there's no additional levies, is just what it is, is a more rigorous requirement to focus in on that local service definition, and then they've extended the public process for people to have more time to consider the bylaw or the background study, and then the annual reporting of the treasurer, just to be more transparent. So, we've gone through that. Then, subsequent in Bill, Bill 108, really was to do a considerable change in the legislation. They would have gone from numerous services and would have dropped us down to only eight. At the end of the day, not much of the Bill 108 was introduced. What they did introduce was allowing cash flow, so that if you're going through with a rental, or if you're in institutional development, you can pay over five years. And you don't pay a building permit, you wait until occupancy. So, they allow for that. If you're nonprofit, you can pay for over 21 years. If you're coming through with site plan or zoning bylaw application, so an amendment, then the rates are frozen until two years after you approve that particular application. Now, with the cash flow for the three different situations, plus the site plan and zoning amendments, they do allow you to basically add interest or to index the payments, but they do start to curtail the quantum of the charge. Next slide. Bill 138, basically, for the most part, it didn't do a lot to the Development Charges Act, but there was, initially, the province wanted to extend these cash flow payments to commercial and industrial, but they had, ended up removing it under Bill 138. They also put in some refinements, community benefit charges. I'm not sure if it applies here, it certainly does in Ottawa, but if you've ever heard of bonus zoning under Section 37, so for high-density developments, there's an ability to impose an extra charge, and that's called a community benefit charge, and they made significant changes to that, but I won't hit on that today. Next slide. And then, under 197, this is where the real changes were made. They dropped the eligible service list, made it 20 eligible services that you could provide for. Most of the normal ones, water, wastewater, roads, et cetera, fire police, but they've removed a number. On a positive side, we used to have some deductions, mandatory 10%, they've removed that, and then, as I say, they've put in that community benefit charge, which is now 4% of the market value of the land. It will apply if you've got buildings that are five stories or higher, you could consider a charge, but if you're not, then it's not applicable to you. Next slide, please. And then, 213, which just introduced an exemption for universities. Colleges were already exempted, so this was an additional exemption for universities. So, as you can see, we've gone through, there are some changes. At the end of the day, probably municipalities lost a little bit more money as a result of losing services and some of the adjustments that were made, but that's what the province felt was in the best interest of the province, I guess. When we start the process, what we have to do is we go through interviews with staff, we generate growth forecasts that are, there are specific ways that we have to prepare the forecast, which is in a little bit more detail because the way that you dissect the growth forecast affects how we do the calculations. And there's been a couple of major decisions that were made. It was other consulting groups who were looking to change the way that they did the calculations, but now we have a definitive laid-out plan within the legislation on how you do these calculations. So, the background study, and I'll come back to the growth forecast very quickly, but when we do the background study, it must be released and made available to the public, and it has to be circulated for a minimum 60 days before council can consider the bylaw. During that period, there is a mandatory public meeting, so that we will have the opportunity for council to hear the, any concerns or answer any questions of the public, and it's an opportunity to engage, and you receive the required feedback. And so, we move on from there. The background study, there are methodologies that have arisen. I'll go through at a very high level for you, but as I say, there's all this influence from the, from this case law, which really is significantly how we make a decision on almost every calculation that we do. Next slide. So, the methodology, very simple, at very high level, very simple terms, you identify the amount, the type, and the location of growth. So, the amount is normally measured over a time horizon. It may be 20 years, which is the time horizon for your official plan. We could go lesser, quite often for things like parks and recreation, we use 10 years. So, you identify the amount. The type is breaking it down into residential versus commercial-industrial-institutional, and then obviously, where the growth is occurring helps us when we sit down with staff to identify potential infrastructure. If you have water and wastewater services, and we're talking about the capacity of the pipes, the pumping stations, stations, the storage, the major trunks, et cetera, but there's also, you know, the impacts on the road system, as I said, streetlights, turning lanes, you know, expansion of the arterial roads, et cetera. So, that information helps us when we're sitting down with staff to link into the development. And you can see, item two is identifying the servicing needs, and then three is then putting capital costs to those needs. So, now we have actual projects, and from there, there are mandated deductions, grant subsidies, other contributions. Back in 1997, you had grants for almost every service. These days, for growth, there's not much in the way of grants that would affect these calculations. We need to turn our minds to benefit to the existing development, so to see is there's something, are we overcoming a problem in the area, water capacity, sewage capacity problems, you know, are we replacing a fire station and expanding it, so there should be some deduction associated with that? So, once again, there's a number of questions we go through with staff when we're looking at those projects. There are historic measurements, so the act says, and it's a level of service, but what it is, it translates into is a mathematical calculation. And we look back 10 years, we look at the quantity of the service, the quality, and we come up with really a service ceiling or a dollar amount that we cannot exceed for each of the services. So, for parks and recreation, maybe we come up with something where we can't exceed $1 million, so when we're looking at the growth forecast and looking at the projects, we can include up to $1 million, but we can't go in excess of that. And then, there's, if we're going from one bylaw to the next, there may be reserve fund balances we have to rationalize. Number five just says we, at the end of those calculations, we must allocate between residential benefit and non-residential, and then we divide by the growth to come up with the calculated charge. Next slide, please. So, in very simple terms, on the left-hand side, identify the infrastructure to accommodate the growth, basically divide it by those costs by the growth, and we come up with the charges on the right-hand side. The residential is normally expressed on low, medium, high density, so single and semi-detached houses are your low. Medium would be your townhouses, and then your high-density, obviously apartments. So, we categorize the charges, and we use occupancy information in order to guide us. So, if we look at, let's say, in Armpryor, the average number of people in newer houses, like single-family homes, is running around 3.5 people per unit. If we take a look at townhouses, they're running at about 2.5 people per unit, and when we're looking at apartments, they're running, small apartments probably at 1.5, a two-bedroom, a larger is probably at 1.8. So, we try and apply the costs on a per capita basis, like based on the average size of those units. That's how you, why you see a varying amount of the charge. Non-residential is expressed almost consistently across the province on a cost per square foot. So, if you're charging a dollar per square foot, and I'm building a 5,000-square-foot commercial business, I'm going to pay $5,000. If it's 100,000 square feet, I pay $100,000. So, those are very, it will, these are always related to the built form, the charge relates to the built form in how the, your building officials will apply those charges. Next slide, please? So, I hate quoting sections of the legislation, but I just wanted to point to some specific words that they use when it comes to the growth. Section 511 says, "The anticipated amount type and location of development for which the development charges can be imposed." What I want to emphasize here is, sometimes I have municipalities say, "Well, we're not growing, so why do we need a development charge?" But what happens is, within that municipality, they may not be growing in population, but they're still building, let's say, 50 units a year, and at the end of 10 years, they've just built 500 units. Well, that 500 units needs water capacity, sewer capacity, they're going to be, you know, leaving the subdivision, going on to roads, you need turning lanes, you need all of this infrastructure, but they say, "We haven't grown." And what happens within, if we get into the demographics of a municipality, as the, if you build a house, a lot of the houses are there to service younger families. That's quite often what you see. So, we see that in the early stages, the newer units are running at that 3.5 people per unit average, but then over time, what happens is the occupancy of that house will drop. And I'll use my house as an example. When I built my, the house that I live in right now, I built it 20 years ago, I've got three kids, so there was five people in my house. And then, over, and then if you look at my house today, there's only two people in it, my wife and myself. Now, I didn't do anything horrendous to my children, I just, you know, encouraged them to leave the nest, so that now, you know, over time, you can see that drop in the housing, and that's a natural thing that occurs. So, in some municipalities, what's happening is, for all the houses that you have, the kids may be moving out, so you're actually getting a drop in population, and these new houses that you're building are just backfilling the number of people that were there. So, maybe my kids moved into one of the new houses with their partners or whatever, so they're, when they're leaving me, they're going into another house, and they're helping to balance the occupancy. And so that, you know, that's why I focus in on, it may not be, it's not necessarily population that we're tracking. What we're tracking is built form. So, we've just built 500 houses over the last 10 years. All of those 500 houses need the servicing, at least the water, the wastewater, the roads, you know, police protection, if they're going to, you have a fire or any type of emergency services, they expect that they're going to be responded to. So, that is a very important thing that we take a look at. And then, as I say, the increase in the needs for service, the second section, is what we try and then look at with this development, what are the services? we try and then look at with this development, what are the services we need? And I will, there is a section, I'm not going to keep quoting all these sections, but there is a provision in the act that says, "Look at the projects en masse that you're building." Not every house has to benefit from that specific development, okay? So that if you need, we've got a subdivision over here, and they need a turning lane or some expansion of water or sewer, you, those costs could be tagged to that development, but then you're building some houses over here, and they're not going to benefit from it. You don't, the act is very clear that there has, doesn't have to be a complete nexus between every project and every development. Because of that, if five years ago, the municipality built the proper or the, you know, the infrastructure to support them, now we've got to come and support this area, the act is saying, "Well, I can see how it has, it'll balance out over time." So it's just something to keep in mind, there doesn't have to be a complete nexus on every project to each individual unit that's going to be built. Next slide. So this, what I say, it's development, it's not population. Same thing with the non-residential, we're looking at built form, and you, there may be instances where you're tearing down a house or tearing down a building. The act does recognize that redevelopment may not pay the full charge, but they still may have, they may, might attract certain costs, so. The growth forecast periods we're looking at, as I say, most of the time, it's, it could be out to the official plan, but quite often, the softer services. We look at 20 years for water, wastewater, roads, stormwater, if it's to be included, police, fire. Past that, a lot of times, we look at a 10-year planning horizon because the projects, the information is normally available over a shorter term. Next slide. This is just a sample of growth forecast. We do look historically at what the growth levels are, and then with the official plan and with the planners, we're trying to look at the amount of development that occurs into the future. In this particular graph, you can see that the darker color is the low density, so it's the singles. We're forecasting the medium density, and we're forecasting the high density, which is in the orange. And part of the forecast that we're looking at is, we do go into the details of looking at what development is coming through the process. What's built, sorry, what developments are approved but not built? What has draft approval? What applications are before, you know, staff right now? And then we look to other perspectives with respect to your official plan designations. Next slide. And again. These are your eligible services. As I say, we were trimmed down to 20 eligible services. A lot of them are the basic, normal ones, the water, wastewater, storm. Services related to a highway is a broader category because it's not only the roads, but it includes the sidewalks, it can include active transportation, turning lanes, streetlights, public works falls into that category. So it's a very broad term, and it's the term used by the legislation. You can see transit, waste aversion, police, fire, those are essential services, as is ambulance. Then we get into, you know, the softer ones, library, long-term care, parks and rec, public health, childcare, but not the rest of social services, only childcare. Housing services, POA, emergency preparedness, and then only for Waterloo region. I don't know why, but they got the ability to charge for an airport, so it's probably a little bit of lobbying going on behind the scenes there, so. Some of the limitations on what we can charge for capital, you can basically charge anything with those services, any project, any infrastructure can generally be included, and they've made some exclusions. Parkland acquisitions, so those that, at the local levels, you provide parkland. We can, we can, once you get the land, we can, you know, do the landscaping, put the baseball diamonds, soccer pitches, everything on it, but we cannot buy land. It's the only service that we cannot buy land for, because the province feels that under the Planning Act, you've got an ability to get some land over time, and what they've been doing to the legislation, it becomes less and less, you're collecting less and less parkland, but it's the way that the, that the legislation's been structured by the province. Computer equipment, for the most part, this has gone to the board, and it's basically if any, in 1997, they introduced this exemption for computers. Computers in 1997 are totally different than computers today, and so over time, this has gone back to the board. So I would almost deemed almost any computer equipment is actually eligible, as long as you, the test is, is it integral to the provision of the service? So obviously, water treatment plants, sewage treatment plants, highly computerized. And a lot of the, your vehicles now have computers in them, et cetera. So this, over time, has been refined down to, you know, maybe administrative staff computers or council's computers like we have in front of us right now. We can't include those, but, you know, for public works, if they have various equipment or the police in their vehicles, they have all those interactive telecommunication, that would be eligible. And then vehicles and equipment, they want to make sure that these items are of substantive quality, so they're going to last a long time, so they have to last seven years or longer. So we can't put weed whippers in there, but we can buy public works, trailers, vehicles, et cetera. So we, something we have to be mindful of when we, when we take a look at this. Next slide. I talked about the service standard. There's a calculation we have to do for all services except for water, wastewater, and storm. There, there's, within the regulations, there's an override where we don't do the measures because you have environmental legislation. So whatever you need to do in order to, for the province to approve the water system or your water expansion, or the sewers or the stormwater, then that's acceptable. But basically, almost everything else except for transit, which is unique now, you have to do these service measures. So that, on the one side, I think there's, at least when we do these calculations and we are communicating with the development community, we can say, "What you're being charged is no higher than the level of service that's been provided over the past 10 years in the community." So we're not putting an extra burden onto you, we're charging you no more than the average level of service over the past 10 years. So that, you know, it's a, to some extent, a balance or ensuring that we're not overburdening development into the future. Next slide. And I'm not going to go through, I apologize for the smallness, and I don't want to go through in any great detail, but you'll see in all of our reports, we go through these calculations where we have to inventory all of the asset, and then in this particular case, I think it's, I can't even read it from here, public works facilities. So we have to do square footage, we have to look at the value, the replacement value. So this is part of the mechanics. For every service and every capital cost, we have to go through as part of justifying that upper limit, so we're not charging more than what we've provided over the past 10 years. So you'll see in any of our reports, these very detailed tables, which most people kind of ignore, but to us, it's very important. Next slide. And, sorry, that's just a continuance of that, so I'll leave that. Capital costs, as I say, it basically, this was an area of contention, but they did clarify it in 1997. So we went through, I guess about eight years of controversy on what is a capital cost. They came back and they gave us a very good definition. You can acquire land or an interest in land. Sometimes you'll pay, you know, to have first rights on a piece of land, let's say if a farmer or a business owner want to sell it, you can, that's an interest in the land. So except for parkland, everything else, every other eligible service we can include. You can improve the land, so I'm saying parks, when you get dedicated parks, we can put the baseball diamonds, we can put trails, we can put the landscaping. For, if you build a building, obviously, you need a parking lot, you need the landscaping, you have to extend the electrical, the water, the wastewater. Everything to improve the land is eligible. You can acquire, so you can buy a building, you can lease a building, you can construct it from scratch, or you can even, in certain instances, improve a building. Let's say you've got a library, and the basement right now is just dead storage, we could contribute some money to change that basement into program space, so now you're going to run computer programs or readings or stuff like that. You've expanded the capacity of that building by improving it. So we can include in certain instances to improve a building. The leasing is, just to be clear, is an interesting one. A place like Guelph, they, they have one main library, but then they don't own any other buildings. But they have a whole bunch of branch libraries that they put in all of the new neighborhoods. So they go into, you know, kind of like the strip malls, and they put their localized branches in those strip malls, and then they take some of the money from development charges and contribute it towards the lease. Takes a little bit of calculation, but it's eligible to include. Equipment and rolling stock, as I noted, a capital component of a lease. Obviously, library materials, if you have a library building, doesn't function very well without the books within it, so we can put in the books. Even the electronic, we're moving towards electronic medium, we can include that. And then any of the studies associated with these, the capital costs are then eligible. And the last point just says, "If we have to debenture, we haven't got enough money in the bank, but we're building the service now, that if we're going to debenture it, we can pay for the interest cost and include that in the development charge." Next slide. And this, once again, I apologize for this small nature of this, but this is just to demonstrate, we start with, when we're looking forward at these projects, we have a number of different projects for that service. We indicate generally the timing of it, what the capital cost is, and then all of the deductions I'll talk about shortly are part of coming down to a net amount on which we're going to base the capital cost. We do, you can see as you move across from left to right, there's a number of deductions. And the last three columns are where we get to at the, at the end, and that's the amount we're trying to collect from the development charge. So the third to last column is the net cost, and then we split it between a residential benefit and non-residential benefit, once again, in order to do that calculation. Next slide. So other things, just to run through quickly that we have to be mindful of, cross-subsidization. The act is very explicit in saying, when we go through these calculations, generally what we do is we give you a full-cost recovery charge. From that point, as we go through and we talk with council, and we go through the public process, you may wish to maybe charge residential, but I don't want to charge commercial industrial institutional, okay? So I'll go with the res, but not the non-residential. If you don't choose to collect the non-residential, you then have to fund those portions of the projects from property taxes or from reserves or whatever, because you're saying, "Okay, here's what I need to fund this project, but I'll elect not to collect this segment of revenue." So you have to pay for it. The cross-subsidization says that you can't take the lost money and put it on the backs of the residential people. So I'm going to lose 20% of the projects? You can't take that loss and bump up the residential charge and have them, then subsidize the non-residential guys. Very explicit within the legislation, so. Next slide. We have to break, as I've noted, the cost between residential and non-residential. There are different ways of doing it. If we have engineering plans for water, wastewater, storm, then we normally follow the way that the engineers have done the calculations in order to do the appropriate allocations. In some cases, we use just a relationship between population and employment, that could be, let's say, for roads. And then the bottom one, when we get into softer things, parks, recreation, library, they're predominantly for the residential community, and so that, but there are provisions in there where the non-residential groups will use these facilities. So like a library, you have a segment of your collection materials which relate to business, so there is an attribution of the service towards them. Maybe in recreation facilities, you know, you have a spring and fall home show, so the, you know, your business people are using the arenas or whatever, they may be renting rooms from the community centers. So there's a minor attribution that we make to recognize that there will be a benefit, so. This is something, once again, we have to sit down, we go through with staff as we're going through to understand, to ensure that we're making proper allocations of the service between the residential and the non-residential guys. Next slide. And this is just, just a representation for the different services. It can vary when we're doing these calculations, be quite a bit in the actual allocations, depending on the service, depending on the, the way that we approach the calculations. So, next slide. Benefit to existing is always one that arises in these discussions, so that when we, I've given example, if we, if we take a look at the service as a service, as a full service, so that for public works, for example, if I had, if we were going to buy one additional snowplow, so you've got all this, these subdivisions that are being developed, and at a certain point in time, you've got to buy another snowplow in order to accommodate the, these particular subdivisions and get the people on the road within a reasonable amount of time. It's, we're looking at all of those snowplows as a service, so you're adding one additional plow. Somebody might say, "Well, okay, if you're going to buy, build a plow, that plow can't touch any of the existing streets," because if it touches an existing street, then it's automatically a benefit to the exist, existing. And that's a very weird way of putting it, but they want to say, "Okay, that truck can only go in, in any of the brand-new subdivisions, but you can't use it for anything else," which to my mind is a silly deployment of the service. But I've had to deal with that at the board as, as something that they wanted to, they wanted to test, I guess. So we look at all of these things as a collective service. So even if you've got, you know, a recreation, you've got an arena, you've got three significant collective areas, you know, you've got three villages, and I've got an arena in one, and I've got a community center in the other, and now I'm going to build some other recreation facility in the third, that's expanding the whole service. Because if I put an indoor soccer over here, some of the people that were doing the pool are doing hockey are now going to come over, and they make capacity in the other, in the other services. Now, you know, instead of my son using the swimming pool, he's going to go over and use soccer, that makes capacity in the other pool. So we look at these things as a broader service. That's why the legislation talks about servicing needs, it doesn't talk about individual projects, so. Sorry, I, these are things I have to deal with at the board, but I just wanted to be clear, it's not on a project-by-project basis, it's measured at a, at a higher level, at a service level. Next slide. Grants and subsidies, as I've noted, there's not much there. Just be aware that from time to time, there are grant programs that say, like ComRIF, that say, "This money is not for growth, it's only for existing benefit." So we have to read the background or the target of the grant programs to see whether there's a deduction against the D E C or not. Gas tax is not a deduction that we make for, against the development charge. Gas tax can be used against a growth-related project. Non-growth, it can be moved from this project over to this project fluidly, as long as you're within the framework that they've set out, then you can use it against any different types of projects. So gas tax is not one that gets deducted as part of the calculations, so. Next slide. And then we always have to say, is this, this particular infrastructure sized only to, to take the growth within the period that we've identified, or is it oversized to take into account growth? Like if we're using a 10-year planning horizon, maybe the sizing of the facilities, many Like if we're using a 10-year planning horizon, maybe the sizing of the facilities meant to capture 20 years where the growth, so we would, we would have to make a deduction. So we're only charging the, a portion of that, that infrastructure, not the totality of it. So there's different measures that we use. Once again, these are, these are part of the detailed interviews that we do with staff in order to make sure that we're making the proper allocations. Next slide, please. There are mandatory exemptions. So these are situations where the province has deemed that it's in the interest of the, at the provincial, provincial level, I guess, to mandate these exemptions. So if you create a charge, so Armpryor, let's say, they've got a non-residential charge, they can't impose that non-residential charge against the county, and they can't charge it against any of the school boards. So there's an automatic exemption. Same thing if the county, if yourself came up with a charge, if they were building a new arena, you can't impose the charge on them. So it's a, it's a local government sector exemption. Industrial buildings, if I have a 100,000-square-foot industrial building and I want to expand it, I can expand up to 50%, and I don't pay a charge on that 50%. If I go to 75%, that 20, that additional 25% increment, I would pay the charge on that. If I have an existing home, single-family, I can add two additional apartments, not have to pay for the charge, as long as they don't more than double the size of the house. If I've got a 1,000-square-foot home and I put in two 800-square-foot apartments, that would mean you're going to pay, because now you've more than doubled the house. But if they stay at, the two apartments stay at 500 square feet each, then you don't, they get exempted. You can get an additional unit in medium and high density, so you can add additional unit under, I guess, into a townhouse, row, row house, put an extra unit on the end. And then they've just introduced, very recently, about adding an additional unit in ancillary, in ancillary dwellings. So that if I have a detached garage and I want to put a unit in there, it's exempt. I have a pool house and I want to put a unit in there, it's exempt. As well, if I'm building a single-family home today, as of right, I can put in an apartment and not have to pay a charge. So you're, they're basically, the province is providing for a level of intensification, and these units are something you're going to have to pay for. You're getting growth, there's people in them, but once again, they don't have to pay the charge, but it's going to be a loss of your municipal revenue. So, next slide. And then, then we have discretionary exemptions. So this is an area where you, as a council, can create additional exemptions. There are things that might be important to your individual municipality, and you will make the appropriate adjustments. Maybe you want to reduce the charge, maybe we calculate a charge of $1,000 and you say, no, I only want to put in $900. You can do that. So you can reduce the amount of the charge. And you could reduce it, maybe I'm going to put 100% in for res, I'm going to reduce it for non-residential. That's totally okay. You can, maybe I want to encourage high density, so I'll charge the singles, I'll charge the medium density, but I won't charge apartment units. So there's a lot of flexibility, as long as you're imposing it across a category or a similar class of development. You can phase the charge in over time, maybe it's going from, let's say, $4,000 to $10,000. You might want to increase it, you know, about $1,200 a year over the period. And then I talked about redevelopment credits. If my house burns down and I'm going to replace it, I've got up to generally five years to replace that. So that's written within the bylaws, that you have a certain amount of time to replace that house. If you knocked it down because you didn't want to pay taxes, and then 20 years later come back and say, oh, well, there used to be a house there, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have to pay. You can, that, you had, there's a limit on how long you can knock down a building, and then the municipality will give you a credit. So normally, it's up to five years is the norm across the province. Excuse me. These are kind of like the top 10. Actually, I think there's only eight there, but, okay, so the top 10 exemptions, places of worship quite often are exempted, bona fide farm buildings, quite often. The house is, is charged most often, but let's say you, you have an equipment shed or whatever you're building, or the barn, that would be, most often municipalities exempt that. Industrial development may see, we're not seeing as much in the exemptions, but we are seeing a little bit more now on perhaps reduced charges for industrial. Downtown, in-field development, we're seeing changes, brownfield, hospitals, university and colleges now are mandatorily exempt, and then nonprofit or affordable housing. Now, I just mentioned that with affordable housing, that's becoming an issue. A lot of municipalities are dealing with it outside the bylaw, so they're coming up with their own grant programs, so that you can, while number one, things are changing in the legislation, so you want to keep pace with the legislation. So they're doing, if you want to do service, give a, an exemption of some sort, then you would do it outside the bylaw and set aside money in order to, to provide that. It's, it's far easier in order to, to target where you want the money to, to occur. Now, most of the time, development charges are payable at the time of building permit issuance. You can, and you can mandate by the bylaw for the hard services, water, wastewater, storm, roads, you can collect at the time of subdivision. So you can get the money a little bit earlier, but those are the two time horizons that are there. As of the new legislation, they've delayed the payment for rental housing and institutions. They now pay upon occupancy, and then they can pay over five years, six installments. First payment on occupancy and then the anniversary over the next five years. Nonprofit will pay in 21 equal payments. Now, there is a provision in the Development Charges Act that will allow you to negotiate with an individual developer or home builder or whatever, and you can, on a one-on-one basis, you can elect to delay the payment, or you can accelerate the payment. You can do prepayment. Sometimes with developers, we need to extend a water main in order to service their land, and the municipality says, well, I haven't got it in the capital budget, I don't have the money. But if you prepay your development charges for that subdivision, I'll have the money and I'll build it. So we can get into prepayment agreements, or, you know, you may want to benefit some type of development and allow them to pay over time. So that's, those are abilities that are already built into the legislation. Next slide. DCs can be charged either, we can calculate it municipal-wide, or we can calculate them on an area-specific basis. Area-specific is easy to calculate for water and wastewater and storm, because obviously, where the pipes run, you can, you can measure where the benefit of the, those services are. Once we get into other areas, it becomes a little bit more challenging. Not that we can't do it, but becomes more challenging. And there are other things in the legislation that may take away from your ability to, to fully recover the costs. If you're going to do, let's say, an arena and you only want to charge a small area of town for it, you may find that because of, you can't exceed the service standard for that area, and you may only collect, let's say, 60% of that particular building. So there's nuances that on a, on a individual basis, we could, we could go through examples. But I would say that, you know, with some municipalities, they do like area-specific, at least for certain services, so we can accommodate those where it's beneficial. And of course, if we calculated on a municipal-wide, but then you didn't want to charge certain areas, you can exempt certain areas. Some municipalities are exempting the downtowns, some municipalities may exempt certain, like the rural area versus the urban area. So there's different, different ways that they do the exemptions. Next slide. And then local services, there's a lot here, I'll leave it for your review, but in, what the legislation is trying to do is to make it very clear, so that the developer, when they're looking to come forward, they know what their costs are. I will, up to, let's say, a 250-millimeter water main, that's my cost. If I oversize it, then I'll get some money back because I'm oversizing. So there's, you know, they know what the rules are and potentially that they, they might have certain recoveries. They know that they have to build the internal roads to maybe, you know, an 18-meter width, but if you make them build at a 24-meter width because it's a collector, then there's an oversizing. So this helps being, no surprises. This document, this local service policy, is written into our, into our background study, so all of the information is made available to the public as we're going through. So just to be clear, this is something that allows you to be very succinct and upfront on what the developer's costs are. And I've found that over the years, writing these policies has made it a lot easier for municipalities to sit down and deal with developers, because you've already set out the standard. The standard is approved by council. The developers know what their costs will be as they come forward. Excuse me. Next slide. And these are some of the things that we include, collector, collector arterial roads, how do we deal with intersection improvements and, and traffic signals, streetlights, sidewalks. You know, you could be responsible for internal, but what about the, the streetlights that's for the, the road that's adjacent? All of a sudden, now you've got a development that's adjacent to this roadway. You could require them to put in the streetlights even on an existing road, because it's adjacent. So there are, you can go, the Act allows you to impose the charge within the subdivision or within the area to which that subdivision relates. So in certain instances, you can go off-site and charge them. Obviously, an intersection improvement, you may hit the, the end of their property, but you have to complete the totality of the intersection, so that could be their cost as well. And as I say, land dedication for easements, water, wastewater, stormwater, those are the, those are normally the things that will articulate in a lot of detail to be very clear. Next slide. And I won't, once again, I won't go through, I apologize for the, the size of this. This is only to demonstrate, as we go from a subdivision, so you've got the houses that you're building, and then from the houses, there's the internal water mains and sewers, and that the sewers may go to a pumping station, but it's very localized, that's still their cost. And that, that sewage is moving through a system. And at a certain point in the hierarchy, we're going to draw a line. Below that is the developer's responsibility, above that line, we're going to put into the development charge. And this is just a representation to say, okay, as we step through, where do we draw the line and where is it the developer's cost? Once again, this is what we work with through staff quite often. You already have those policies or how you deal with the developers already, but we formalize it and put it into a document so it's very clear. Next slide. Mandatory, that money that you collect goes into a reserve fund and that you report annually on, on those funds. So the treasurer, generally in and around May, most municipalities file the treasurer's statement, and it says, here's my opening balance, here's how much money I collected, here's how much money I used, here's my closing balance, and I'm going to add interest onto the closing balance. Okay, you have to add interest to it. For those expenditures that I made, then you have to detail on individual projects, which, where did you transfer the money to? So there's a level of transparency to the development community, you post it on your website, there's clarity in, you know, you're posting it every year, just to say that most times, the development community don't look at it until you come up to your next development charge study, and then they download it and they start to take a look at it because they want to make sure that everything that you talked about is, is appropriate. And that's fine, that's, that's human nature, but you're required to put it onto the, the website. Next slide. One thing is that the money that you collect has to be used for that service. So if you're collecting for roads, you can't all of a sudden just decide to take the money and build it and build something else, okay? There's a municipality, I remember wiping out all of their lot levy reserves, because it wasn't quite the, the rules in place, and took all of the money and built one of the most expensive city halls in Ontario. Very nice, but they wiped out all of the funds on which they were supposed to use it. So because of those type of things, the province came in and said, you are specifically required to keep the money. Now, we can loan it, so let's say, you know, we're going to do, you know, an operations center right now, and, but you don't need the money, some of the money for the roads, you can transfer it over, build that, and then pay it back. So there are the ability to, to do loans, but once again, the treasurer's statement has to track that type of thing, and, and it's totally acceptable. What you cannot do is, if I've got a project that is, let's say, 90% growth and there was a 10% deduction in it, I cannot use development charge money to cash flow that 10% deduction. You have to come up with the, with the money that's deducted for other purposes, you have to come up with that, but then you, you can use, obviously, to fund the 90%, you can borrow from some of the other reserve funds. So, next slide. And as I say, this is mandatory, must be made available annually. And once again, I apologize, but this is basically just a, if you have the opportunity to take a look at it, this is kind of the layout that has to be provided for, for the public use. So this is opening statement, what did I use, what money came in, and then what money went out, apply interest, closing balance. Very, very straightforward statement. Next slide. So I'm getting towards the end. What I thought I, you might find interesting was to see some of the charges that were in place across the county, and then I've also given you some information on counties across Ontario, what type of charges they've put in place. So in this particular case, you can see that this is the single and semi-detached, and the charges at, at the highest levels are running just, and this is within Armpryor. They actually have a municipal-wide, which is a little under 16,000, and then they have a, a special area where they pre-built some servicing, and that's the state court area, and they have an additional recovery from that. So right now, they're at the highest level, in and around $16,000. Next is Renfrew, running just below $10,000, and then we have Pettawawa, running just above $6, and then Cobden, running, so Whitewater Region has a couple of different charges, Cobden being the highest for them, running at about $5,800. And then, as you can see, we, we step down as we go across. There are, I think, six municipalities that don't have development charges at this point, and they're represented there on the right-hand side of the slide. So a lot of the charges are in and around that, I guess, $4,000 to $6,000 range for the most part in the municipality. If we go to the next slide, this is still within your county, but these are the commercial charges. So it's a charge per square foot of building space. Once again, you can see Armpryor's running in the range of about $7 to $9 per square foot, and then Renfrew has a couple of different charges, and they're running, and Renfrew runs from a low of $3 to a high of $6. We have Pettawawa running just below $4, and as you can see, they step down to roughly about $25, $30 per square foot. And then a number of municipalities, once again, that don't have charges. If we go to the industrial side, you can see that similar type of allocation here. Sometimes we do see differences, whether municipalities exempt or they choose to, we can calculate industrial on a slightly different basis, which would allocate more to the commercial but less to the industrial. So there's a couple of different ways that we can, we can do it, but this pattern is similar to the, to the commercial. Now, if we go to the next slide, this is showing you in, across Now, if we go to the next slide, this is showing you in, across Ontario, these are the charges for counties. Now, the first one, the tallest one there, I've got to qualify. Oxford County provide water and wastewater servicing to its local municipalities. So it's the only county that actually provides water and wastewater services. Most other counties have the local municipalities providing that service. So I've given you their charge, which is running, excuse me, just under $25,000. But if you come in a little bit, just trying to see where it is. So the third one from the, like, if we go to the middle and you count from right to left, the third one is Oxford, and they're running in and around $4,000. So about $21,000 is the water and wastewater. Their charge without the water and wastewater is running at $4,000. So that's for ambulance services, for if they want to include childcare. Roads is the predominant one, et cetera. So the, if you go to, as we move across, you can see Simcoe County is just below $15,000. So once again, single detached unit. And then we've got Gray and Peterborough, running at about $9,000. Wellington's running at about $6,000. And then you've got Dufferin, Oxford, without the water, wastewater. Northumberland in around $3,500, $4,000. And then lastly, a small amount in Landarc, running at about $1,500. So then there's a number of municipalities that haven't elected it. I would identify that there's, there are probably about four municipalities on there that have done the DC survey, they've gone through the DC process and haven't done it at this particular point. I've experienced that before. It at least provides an opportunity to understand what the potential is over time. However, those municipalities, and I'll point out guys like Gray and Wellington and Dufferin, they ended up moving towards development charges. Once they found they were getting a level of growth that, you know, was causing more costs than benefits, that they moved towards it. If we go to the next slide, this is the non-residential charge. Once again, probably ignore the, this is commercial, ignore the big one for Oxford. But Simcoe's running a little over $4 per square foot. And then most of the others are running between $1 and $2 per square foot for the commercial development. And lastly, on the industrial side, you can see that some of the counties have chosen to not impose an industrial charge or they've elected to reduce the charge. So you can see some of them have lowered the charge. So that really concludes my presentation. I am happy to hand it through the chair and I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I apologize. Perhaps some of it's a little dry. It's a piece of legislation, which is probably the most, I would say, I work with 10, 11 actually, 11 pieces of legislation quite often in my job. This is the most complex piece of legislation there is. And Municipal Act and Planning Act have their own nuances, like they can be complex. But this one has so much legislation, which defines how we do the mechanics of it, that, you know, there's a lot to talk about. So anyway, I apologize if it was a little bit dry.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Scanlon. And from my perspective, it wasn't dry at all. I certainly learned a lot. It's been very interesting and informative. I'm definitely going to have to go through those slides again though with the highlighter. Before I open it up to questions from council, I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Morrow to explain to us how he sees this evolving. So Mr. Morrow, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council. So if council recalls, we had Mr. Scanlon come today to provide us with information and an overview. I'm assuming there's lots of questions for Mr. Scanlon as we proceed, but I would ask that council keep in mind, at the end of the day today, what direction they would like to provide council. So I know Mr. Perkins in past operations committee reports has outlined alternatives. I'm assuming that at the end of the day, it would be the will of council to send staff back and do some additional research now that we have had this information presentation. But I would ask that you keep in mind as we have the conversation with Mr. Scanlon, what you would like to see staff do as a follow-up to this presentation. Thank you for that, Warden, and thank you for your presentation. Gary was fantastic. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morrow. So now I will open it up for questions. Counselor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you so much, Mr. Scanlon. It was very interesting, not exactly in my wheelhouse, but interesting nonetheless, very educational. I think one of the things, and you touched on it at the end, one of the things that we're doing in this chamber is we're looking at potential development charges for the county of Renfrew. And so many of those services, water, wastewater, fire, police, they're at the local level. So I think that as a council here, we have to be very cognizant of the fact that these funds, if we chose to do this, would come to the county of Renfrew. They wouldn't be coming to our local municipality, not for our roads. You know, I will say in Bonnershire Valley and the village of Eganville, we only use about 33% of our water and wastewater system. I mean, we want development. We want people to come to Bonnershire Valley and build. And I see this as a severe impediment to some of the smaller municipalities. And I think you showed those of us that don't have development charges, I don't think there would be any way I could defend having development charges come from Bonnershire Valley to the county of Renfrew. So, but thank you. It was very interesting, certainly something that may have to be taken into consideration at the local level, you know, over time. But yeah, I think one of the things we have to remember is that a whole lot of those items are not paid for at the county level. Thank you.
And through the chair, yes, obviously, I use a lot of examples that are more localized. Sometimes they're easier to use the examples. I find with the county, the roads is most often the one that gets incorporated. Some municipalities have looked at, you know, childcare, for example, ambulance services if they're providing it. So there's a number of other services that are included in there that they may look at. But all of the ones where you see the charge, roads are involved. Part of the decisions that I listen to the councils in their, when they're doing their deliberations, obviously. And one of the things is, if you're going to have growth and there are costs, there's not a lot of opportunities. I mean, it's either, you know, the existing taxpayer pays for those roads, or you get development charges and you take the money from those who are creating the additional volume, the traffic, or the need for the infrastructure, and you partially or wholly recover the money from them. And really, a lot of times, that's where the conversation comes down to, is if we have no development charges, then we're happy enough to pay for it from property taxes. But if we want to not impose that infrastructure cost onto the existing, we'll charge the new owners of the homes those costs. And normally that's, and I understand there's a lot of discussion. Your particular case with excess capacity in the water and the wastewater system, fantastic. That means if you decided to look at it, there wouldn't be a water and wastewater component to it, which can also be a sizable cost component to the charge.
Counselor Lynch, I saw your hand up as well as, I think, someone else over there. Counselor TJ, did you have your hand up as well?
I was just going to agree with Counselor Murphy. Thank you. Oh, Jerry. Counselor Lynch, please.
I apologize. I was just going to agree with Counselor Murphy. Thank you.
Counselor Lynch.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Gary, for the presentation. I'd like to touch on the airports. The county has two airports, and they're used by ambulance, by police. Hydro. Why can't there be a charge for our two airports to the entire county? Thank you.
That's a very good question. If there are aspects, if, let me start this way. If there were facilities that you were going to build for those services and you were going to build them on the airport lands, let's say you were going to build a building for their equipment or for their vehicles or, you know, if they, whatever they need, if they're going to do airlifts, if we can make the nexus between that facility and the service, we'd be able to include it. I think what they're excluding is the cost of the runways, the expansion of the runways for more domestic purposes, the terminals, that type of thing, they have removed. But if it's, if you needed to, if you wanted to locate the ambulance service out on those lands and that now is going to be the headquarters, there would be nothing to stop us from being able to impose that charge for that service at the airport lands. But the runways, probably we can't impose the charge.
Supplementary, Counselor Lynch?
Thank you for that, Gary. The second question was five stories or more, 10% community charge?
There's the community benefit charge. It was, this is Section 37 of the Planning Act, actually. And it used to be called bonus zoning. And probably in this area, you would have seen it in Ottawa, but perhaps, I don't know if anybody else in this, in the county would have used it. And it used to be used for if you have an average density that they put across the downtown, let's say it's 20 stories. And somebody wants to go with a 30-story building. In order to give the approval, they would ask for additional services, contributions or something. And that's where this bonus zoning category was. But it's always been called a community benefit charge. What the province has done now is they've changed it to the point where they've said, okay, now it's not just those high buildings, it's any building that is five stories or higher and has at least 10 residential units in it, then they could be imposed this charge. And the charge is 4% of the market value of the land the day before they construct. So if the land's worth a million dollars, I could impose a community benefit charge of 4%. So I would get $40,000 off of that acre of land. So there's a process, excuse me, we have to go through, a strategy or a background study, if you will. It's not as cumbersome as the Development Charges Act, but you still have to do a background study and engage with the public before you impose a bylaw.
Thank you.
Counselor TJ, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The first one, I couldn't see exactly, and I tried to write down, but it appears that nine counties do and 15 don't. So that sends a message to me saying that obviously 15 want to stay open more for business and they're looking and feel that it could be detrimental. I'm just assuming. Am I close, nine, four, and 15 against?
Yeah, I'd send that magnitude. Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you. If I may, Madam Warden, my second question is, it would be the locals, that local municipalities would charge that development charge and then we give it to the county? Is that the way it works?
If you pass a bylaw at the county level, the local municipalities must collect on your behalf, and then they turn the money over to the county because it's your bylaw.
It will appear that we're the guys getting the money. That's the problem I have. That's what happens. They blame us and we don't even get the money. So anyways, thank you.
Counselor Emo, please, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Always informative. A couple of really quick questions. Slide 38. And when you talk about exemptions, you mentioned if someone adds a room or if they're renovating their house and putting apartments in. So I'm assuming laneway housing and coach houses, would they be included as well? Because those are new, relatively new housing units that have been added to the various rewrites of the Planning Act in the last 18 months.
Through the chair, there's an area where, depending on the nature of the structure, it's unclear on what the province set out. A standalone tiny home that has its own kitchen and all of those facilities, is that ancillary to the single-family home? A garage is ancillary. It's a supportive structure. A pool house is a supportive structure, a tool shed. But is a standalone, single-family home, is that ancillary? Because the word ancillary means supportive of. So that's an area of confusion that the provinces set out for us. Now, on the other side, municipalities, probably the greater portion are also exempting those tiny homes, as long, but some are putting square footage around them. I live in the country. I've got a 3,000-square-foot home. If I can add an extra house, can I add two, and two houses at 1,500 square feet? That's bigger than a lot of subdivisions. So, you know, there's a big, there's a big gap there that we are, well, the lawyers like to say, we're going to make law. So these are things we should go back to the board. But just, for the most part, probably more municipalities are looking to exempt those, just as a matter of course, than not. But not everybody is exempting them.
Counselor Emo.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Gary. The county has some different responsibilities on the local municipality. I think some of the focus here has been unfairly thrown into looking after roads. So I'm curious about if we had the opportunity to put different charges in place, like long-term care and rent geared-to-income housing or accessible housing. Are those things that could be allocated under a Development Charges Act bylaw if the county of Renfrew was to enact one? Because those are fairly significant pressures when you look at our demographics over the next 10, 15, 20 years. And we don't really have the resources developed to date to develop those.
Through the chair, absolutely. The, that's traditionally the roads, you know, have been a significant, always in there. What we have seen is in a place like Wellington County right now, sizable increases due directly to long-term care. And they are putting in the affordable, sorry, the municipal units, the municipal-built units, housing, municipal housing, that's the words I'm looking for. So they have included that as part of their charges. So they've added about $2,000 for specifically those two services in, basically in the last couple of months.
Are there any other further questions? Oh, Counselor Emo, please. Thank you for waving.
Thank you. And as we move forward with service models, we may be looking at a community hubs model where we have a dormant or a room attached to some of our facilities in our outline county, in our outline communities. Is that something that we could look at as being funded as well so that visiting professionals could come in? A lot of us don't have family doctors. We don't have public transit to move people into some of the larger centers for medical appointments. And increasingly, we're going to go to likely a virtual model and less bricks and mortar. But we're still going to have to have our local folks be able to come to a spot and have a professional there to help them navigate through doctors, specialists, tests, all sorts of stuff. So is that a fundable, is that something we could add into a line to?
Well, public health is an eligible service. So if the, through that process, you're expanding the service, making it available, then, you know, I'd have to look specifically at the nature of what you're providing. But I'm perceiving that that falls under the public health umbrella, which once again is an eligible service, whether you're providing, you know, accommodations or square footage, you know, for Whether you're providing, you know, accommodations or square footage, you know, for, for visitations or I guess some type of center where they could, you know, talk to a doctor virtually, I would say that all of those potentially are, could be considered as part of the DC.
Counselor Emo.
Thank you. So, and I'm guessing as part of our process, we might want to go back to each of our committees because it's not just a roads question for us. And I think that's been how it's been couched as we're, you know, the counties were racing out to put in stoplights and, and intersections and drainage and roads. So this is probably much broader than a roads issue, given the pressures we're under. And I think, I'm a little concerned when I hear comments in the public that we're stopping up business. We had a report last month where we find out that we have 2,500 lots are approved that aren't built on in the county. Outside of subdivisions, we have 4,900 lots of a quarter acre to five acres that aren't being built on. We have 6,200 parcels larger than five acres that aren't being built on. And we have 13,800 residential units that aren't being, that aren't being developed. So I don't think we're going to be impinging on development. I think probably our focus should be, how do we have the province or somebody incentivize how we can get, get built upon this? So I'm not sure that we'd be stopping up development by moving forward the Development Charges Act, but I'm really curious about the conversation brought back from the committees about what they see as eligible costs that could be applied to development charges bylaw, which would fund some of our obligations that we know of now and that are going to develop in the future. So, thank you. Thank you, Gary. Very informative and I'm glad you made it in today.
Thank you very much, Counselor Emo. Mr. Morrow, you have a question, sir, or a comment?
Thank you, Warden, and through you, too, Gary. I guess my question is, and, you know, I understand where Counselor Emo was going, but my question is really specific to what we've been hearing at the staff level with respect to the pressures that are out there. So for us, those are roads and bridges and that is the, you know, the impetus of the conversation today and it's what has driven part of this agenda. My question to you would be, in the background study, and maybe I don't clearly understand it well enough, would the background study take us down a road where we would identify where those specific pressures are and allow us to adopt area-specific development charges in those areas only to fund those particular initiatives, where those growth pressures are occurring right now? And would it help to address the issue where there is less growth and some of those municipalities don't want to see the development charges? And I'll...
Through the chair, yes, yes, we could, we could do as you've described. We could look at where the, you know, the most significant pressures and the need for the, the direct infrastructure. There would be a little bit more dialogue with the staff to get through and make sure we're very clear on, on how the, the works are benefiting specifically because you get some pass-through traffic and stuff like that. So let's say, doing it, I'm just off the top of my head, if I could collect $1,000 or if I could, if I could pay 100% of the projects, doing it on an area specific, maybe I might drop down to 90% because there's a couple of things that I have to adjust for. But yeah, we, we could do, like, let's say, the, the northern part is where the, all the infrastructure is needed and that's where the most significant growth is. And at some point, as you move to the south, there's a lesser need, we could, we could consider that, absolutely.
Counselor Hunt, please, sir.
Thank you. So if one municipality, say municipality A, needed a new lane and the decision was to put development charges, county development charges on that municipality, which would, I consider an area, that was paid into the county, could it stay in a pot and only benefit the municipality where the funds came from?
We, we could do that, through the chair. We could do that. Getting into very, like minutia every time, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that we'd want to have 20 pots. It becomes, becomes very difficult to, to do. The easiest would be to say the north versus the south or the northwest versus the, you know, the, the northeast or such. We would, I think we would, through discussions with staff, we would look to see what the most logical way of portraying this would be and even could come back with options. So I mean, there's, there's opportunities to investigate it and see what works the best. But if, sorry, just to answer your question specifically, if we broke it into 20 different charges, each, the money has to go into each one of those, those buckets of DCs.
Counselor Hunt.
Thank you. And I guess the reason I asked that question was, some of the municipalities, and rightfully so, they know their areas, they do, do not want development charges and they think that it would hinder growth. So that would allow them not to charge it and they would find another way if there was growth of county roads in their area, how it was paid for, they might choose to pay for it. If the county is not paying for it, they may choose to pay for it through taxation. But if in my municipality, if we were getting a, a new lane of traffic, we as a municipality could choose to have a county development charge in concert with the county and it be held just to pay for improvements that were in our area.
We could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sweet, please, sir. I believe you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you very much, Warden. Yeah, interesting, Gary. Good afternoon, nice to see you again. I think Counselor Hunt spoke, spoke to this. There is a nervousness about this whole process of development. If you start putting that charge in place, that it's going to stifle growth, et cetera. I'm not sure that that's the case. As you know, we've had development fees in, in our area for 25 years and we haven't seen that. And in fact, the last two public meetings we had after we brought the study in, there was nobody there. You know, so it, it's a bit of a non-issue in that regard. I do have an issue, and I think Brian spoke to it, about some sort of area rating, and is that fair to, to, to those who are creating all of the, the growth? These roads, if it was roads, are used by all residents of the county of Renfrew, not exclusively for Brian's municipality or my municipality. So is it fair that I have to pay for all of those roads or my developers have to pay for all those roads, which will have excess capacity on them? I just, I'm just having trouble with, with that situation. So yeah, I, I, I understand the area reading situation, but I am still having trouble having my community pay for a bunch of roads that, if it's development, that a whole host of individuals from throughout the county of Renfrew are using them, who are not paying development fees. The fair and equitable way to do it is everyone pays into the pot. That, that would be the fair and equitable way. Then there's no argument or no dis, you may get that pushback from, from the, those who are nervous about this. Can you speak a little bit about that? Is that a fair and equitable way to do this? I, I don't think it is, but I'd like to hear what your thoughts are.
So you've got a couple of questions in there and they're all very good questions. I'll try and break them apart. I'll start with the, the end part. You're right, when we take a look in, I'm not a transportation engineer, but I've worked with transportation engineers now for 40 years, so I get the hang of it, I think. When we get into the development charge, what you do see is that it's not only your, your residents are, are located here, but where their jobs are, maybe I'm going from, you know, Renfrew over to Arm Prior or, you know, you know, from the east to the west, north to the south, so that it's not just where the, the initial location is, they're using all of the road systems. As well, for the non-residential, your service, you know, your businesses, they're not just located and only serving the local municipality, they're out, if you've got plumbers, if you've got, you know, guys that, that provide any variety of services. They're moving around their geography. So you're right, from a transportation movement, the benefit isn't solely in that one area. And what I wasn't, while, why I was saying, I'll have to, if you're going to do, in theory, 100, if I can collect 100%, if you move it down to area-specific, I'm going to collect less of that project. It's because I've got to recognize exactly what you've just brought up. There's primary and secondary traffic and so some of the traffic is being generated from outside. If I only looked at one community, some of the traffic's being generated from the adjacent municipalities and so I've got to make a deduction to recognize that the growth is occurring outside of the area coming into this community because they want to shop for groceries or they've got certain services that they need. So at the county level, you end up collecting less as a result, and that's, that's some of the things we would have to recognize at the, at the, in our, in our calculations working with staff to figure out how, how we would do it. So, right off the bat, that would be, that would be an impact, you'd collect less because of that factor that you just said. One of the things that, over the years, and I've, I've been doing development charges and lot levies for 40 years, the measures quite often that are used by the building industry as well as municipalities and such, is a measure where if development charges are in the range of 6 and maybe as high as 8% of the house prices, that that's within a realm of acceptability. Just taking a look, I think, just reading some recent stuff, I think the average price across the whole county, house price is 410,000, 408 or 409. I think in Renfrew, I was reading that the average price is in excess of $800,000. So, you know, if you take something like Arm Prior at $16,000 and if, let's say, they're at $800,000, then their charge is 2% of the, the price of a house. If the county came up with a charge, what we saw, $4,000 was a, a common number, then 4,000, as the, the county average, $400,000 is 1%. So it's not been viewed as a significant determinant of, we're not, oh, we're not going to build or we are going to build. There are some municipalities that have, such as Brockville, Leamington, Cornwall, who for a period of time said, who believed that if we didn't have development charges, we'd have huge amounts of development. What they found over five years and 10 years is the amount of development was exactly the same. And what they found was the cost of the infrastructure had to be funded and it was going back onto the property taxpayers. And all of those municipalities have come back to, well, Leamington, I've just, just releasing their, their background study next week. So they're, they're, the council want, have asked to, to come back and consider it. So it's one of those things, is it, is a quantum of $4,000 going to sway whether houses are built or not? I don't believe so, but, you know, we all have our own perspectives on that and that's fair. I'm just saying from the historic, when, when we had lot levies all the way through, all of those measures have been basically consistent, the, you know, the 6 to 8% and anything lower than that hasn't been perceived as a significant influencer. But that's just on the history.
Counselor Sweet, please.
Was that, Warden?
Yes, yes.
Oh, pardon me, sorry. Go ahead. Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, you're talking exactly about the issue that I, that, that I, I think we want to identify. Within the last seven years, there's been 750 new families moved into the garrison at Perahuahua. Those individuals do not all live in the town of Perahuahua. They live throughout Renfrew County and included the city of Pembroke, the separated city. And I just find it a little bit difficult to comprehend why, if there was a development fee there, that I would be asked or my residents or developers would be asked, asked to pay this, when in actual fact, they're spread throughout, I, I would suggest probably every municipality that's represented in, in the county of Renfrew. I'm having trouble understanding that. I suppose I'll need to find a dark corner somewhere and go and think this through, but I, I just find it a little bit unfair that, that we would put on the, on the block, so to speak, to take care of this. There's been two development hotspots within the county, most recently Arm Prior and, I suppose, Arm, Arm Prior and ourselves. And I'm having trouble with this, to, to understand why, why there should be an additional charge levy against the development in the town of Perahuahua. I don't, I don't get it. I, I really, as I say, I'll need to, I, I'll need to go somewhere quiet and, and think this one through because it's not making too much sense to me, very frankly.
Thank you, Counselor Sweet. Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and I also want to, to thank Gary. It has certainly illuminated much more the conversations surrounding the development charges. There are two things, first, to its core, and as I'm sitting here, it's almost strikes me of similar to the fees and charges bylaw that we were considering, if that was the last council meeting or two council meetings ago. But ultimately, at its very core, setting aside the dynamics, the gears, if you will, of development charges, at its core is that philosophy of who's paying for the growth? Is it the current ratepayers that are going to pay for the growth or is it the new people that are going to come in that are going to pay for the growth? You know, I think of, certainly as, as my colleague, Counselor Murphy, has suggested, there were ratepayers in the past in the Village of Eganville that built a water treatment facility. They picked that up on their property taxes, whether it was through reserves, through debt financing, I do not know which, but it is paid for. So any development that comes now is actually benefiting from the added, the extra capacity that they have without having paid anything for it, but those that are, are living there now or have lived there in the past have paid for it. So I think that that is certainly a key question. Right now, growth is, growth certainly at the county level, is being paid for, financed through the municipal levy. And again, when you hear anyone associates municipalities that will talk about, well, there are three means of financing. You have the levy, you have debt and you have reserves. What they mean is, you have levy. Reserves just means you've taken money from current ratepayers and you're stuck in the bank until you need it. Debt means you're going to have people down the road, they're going to pay it through their levy. So you have the one means of doing so. So it, it certainly strikes me, as Counselor Emo has suggested, with respect to long-term care, with respect to childcare, with respect to ambulance, the paramedic service, we do know that, that we are operating essentially at capacity right now with the, the paramedic service. We know that the wait lists for long-term care are not shortening, they are lengthening. So we have to determine, is it going to be the levy that is going to pay for it, in which case it is nondiscriminating completely? It is equitably assigned to the assessment right across the county of Renfrew. You have a higher assessment, you're paying more towards it. You have a lower assessment, you pay less towards it. It doesn't matter where the higher growth is, it is, it is completely oblivious to growth. With respect to development charges, I absolutely, even though Admaster Bromley does not have development charges, there are a number, number of factors in the background. First, we have a lot of crown land. Secondly, we have a lot of AG land. We already have about a postage stamp worth of real estate that is developable. So we are in a competitive marketplace. I'm certainly fascinated by your comments, Gary, about Leamington, particularly how you close, that everybody has their opinion on it. Whether it's an informed opinion or not, everyone has one. It, it, I certainly endorse the notion that as you have growth, it is the new folks that are coming in rather than the ones that have lived in my community and have paid for the services we have, that it is the new people coming in that are going to pay for the growth. With respect to, and certainly as, as Counselor Emo and as, as Counselor Sweet have suggested, roads have sucked up a lot of the oxygen in the room, this room, with respect to development charges. What I would say is, is absolutely, the, the road network likewise is oblivious to where someone is from. where someone is from. We don't do, we don't do quantitative or qualitative analyses on our, on our traffic counts. We don't inquire of people that are on the roads, where they're coming from, where they're heading to, et cetera. So, I do know that there are people in my community that are going up to, to Counselor Sweet's community, but I dare say that it's much smaller. I think it was about a year ago when Counselor Sweet informed this council that his community was anticipating, I think it was a 300-home development. I expect most of those 300 homes are going to impact traffic within Perahuahua. At that same time, we had 12, I had 12 homes scattered across. This was not ad development. Probably many of them were demolitions and rebuilds. I would suggest one of them might impact County Road 51, whereas I would suggest that 300 of the homes in Perahuahua are likely going to impact County Road 51. So, I would, I would certainly agree that there, there would be a, somehow, we need, we need to come up with the alchemy that figures out what that, that formula is. But equitable, I don't think in this instance means equal. And I think we need to be very careful about discriminating between equal and equitable. But on the, overall, I suppose, Madam Warden, this is, is much more comment than question. But I certainly endorse the, the notionally, development charges. I think that the process as laid out by Gary, the, the formal process that, that a municipality must go through, I think that that would be invaluable in shedding light on where our community is, getting public input, and having a larger and more focused conversation. Herefore, I don't think, certainly we did not have the benefit of what Gary presented here today, which, as I said, is very illuminating, but I think that that process would also do substantial towards, towards bringing the community into this and having that conversation more broadly.
Thank you very much, Counsel Donahue. Yes, it was most a comment, but very, very well said. I don't know, Mr. Scanlon, did you want to respond?
No, I think he, I think, I think the, what we hear a lot when we go through this process is the balance between who pays. And I think you've categorized it correctly. If, if you don't have development charges, if you don't have any growth, then none of your residents or none of your future residents are contributing towards the infrastructure. But if you don't have development charges, all of your existing residents are going to pay towards the, the, the infrastructure. And that's, that's the balance that, that I, the challenge, I would say, for you as counselors always, is who pays for it? Should it be against the existing, my existing residents to pay for growth-related infrastructure? Or should it be the individuals, for the most part, that create the need for the infrastructure? Should they pay all or even a portion of it? And that's where you have the ability to make refinements after we do the, the calculations.
Thank you very much, sir. Counsel TJ, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just, you said, as we were, questions were being asked, you said you can compromise, and you can do it this way, and you can change. So, could, again, I don't want to belabor that, but can we not make the county collect that charge and leave the municipalities alone?
This has been challenged at the board by Markham, and the answer is no. The local municipal, whoever is doing the, whoever is doing the billing official, that's where the collection point is.
Thank you.
Are there any other further questions? Counsel Riguerre, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and that kind of brings it to my question, and Gary, it's good to see you again. We're fairly new at this, we're only into it a year, but it's certainly working well for us. My question, as you mentioned, it's the lower-tier municipalities that will, will have to, to get the funds, or, or, my question is, does that put additional staffing pressure on to the lower-tier municipalities? Because as you're aware, we're already small enough as it is, and especially if we were to go to an area rating, I think that could be just an administrative nightmare, and I'm just wondering if that, if that could possibly happen. Thank you.
In talking with, if you have a development charge right now, then there's no, really there's no additional, real significant additional burden, because you're already into a process of collecting, you've set up, you've set up an account, this one, you're already collecting money on behalf, you know, the levies or whatever other charges are there. So, the municipal, the locals quite often are, are collecting a lot of those revenues. So, I don't believe, and from my conversations with others, it's never been perceived as a significant burden, where you'd need additional staffing. Yes, there's an extra activity, don't take away from that, because now the charge has to be imposed. If it's anything of any complexity, I know some municipalities just say, okay, I've got this building, you know, this, here's, here's the building that's being provided, and they send a text or, sorry, an email to the upper tier, and they say, what charge is being imposed? Whatever you tell me, I'll do. And so that, they do say, this is, this is the direct, the direction from the, the upper tier, and this is what we do. So, I know that it's, you know, because it's your official, you know, it's, it's the perception, we're doing it to the individuals, but, you know, there's, at the end of the day, it's mandatory, if the upper tier has it, the locals must collect. But it doesn't mean that you have to do the calculations and stuff like that, and some municipalities return the money on, every two months, some are every quarter. I mean, how you cut the check can be done in, in different ways. I'm sure that's something staff are amenable to talking to, so, that's the best I can answer.
Thank you. Any other further questions? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Morrow, how would you like us to proceed from here?
Thank you. And I guess, you know, we have a very good conversation, Warden, and through you to County Council. I'm just wondering if we can get direction to staff to continue to investigate opportunities associated with development charges and cost recovery to address growth issues in the county of Renfrew. And we're, and essentially, that would be the recommendation I would put on the floor, is that staff continue to investigate, bringing back further information with respect to opportunities as it relates to addressing additional growth in the county of Renfrew.
Thank you for that. Counsel Ema and Counsel Murphy, are you moving and stacking? Or do you have, yes, okay, thank you.
I'll stack it in here, or whatever.
Yes, Madam Warden, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Counsel TJ.
I'd ask for a recorded vote, please.
All right. There's further discussion. Counsel Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. You couldn't hear me actually knocking on the glass. That is a very effective means of communication. I just, I wonder, in, in addition to, to Mr. Morrow's suggestion of continuing to investigate, and certainly this would fall within the purview of investigating, but Gary has laid out the process for, for this, that if that be kind of part of the, the investigation of, with a, a proposal or a schedule, should the council wish to, to go down that road of, of the process, even after which we do not necessarily have to adopt a, a development charges bylaw, but that certainly the process be part of that investigation. So, whether that be formally part of this resolution, or if that's just understood, I would, I would defer to Mr. Morrow.
Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to Counsel Donahue. I understand that that would be part of the work that staff would do as part of the current resolution in front of council.
Thank you. Counsel Ema.
And I might, I safe, safe in assuming, based on our conversation, that it's not just limited to streetlights and roads, it's, it's all aspects of county operations?
That's certainly my understanding, and I think that is the message that the council has given to Mr. Morrow. Mr. Morrow, are you good with that?
I am, Warden, and that is the value in these meetings being recorded.
Thank, thank you. I think that would reassure our community.
Thank you. Are there any other further comments? Counsel Lynch, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden. Just to clarify, this is going to include the word background? The background study that has been mentioned a half a dozen times, that once we have the information that you're going to go out and, and look for, but with the background information, then we'll have the, the ABCs and Ds, and where we're going to go with this, if we're going to go at all. I mean, you can ask all the questions you want from the director, which we've had, and we're still spinning our wheels. With more discussion, without the experts to say what we can and can't do, and that's where this background study came through that was mentioned a half a dozen times. Warden, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lynch, and I have, I suspect, and Mr. Morrow, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that further investigation is probably going to include Mr. Scanlon in the process. Mr. Morrow?
Thank you, Chair, and you're, you're correct in your assumption that we will continue to work with Mr. Scanlon and his colleagues to develop a, a position. However, I'm reluctant to say that it would include moving forward on a background study at this point, because I think the options in front of us are more than just development charges. It would go back to the cost-sharing component that Mr. Perkins originally presented. My second, my second comment with respect to proceeding with a background study is, that is a significant financial commitment on the part of council, and I'm not sure council has made that commitment yet, and clearly understands what those costs are. So, I would not, I'd be cautious about saying we're proceeding with the background study at this point. That's why I phrase it the way I did with respect to further investigation.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow, and I'm wondering perhaps if, if you're able to, not necessarily today, but come back to council with sort of an outline of how you see the, the progression taking place as far as, as further investigation, and what we can expect staff will be looking at, and what we, what staff won't be looking at at this point in time. Is that fair?
Thank you, Warden, and through you to County Council. I think that's a, a, a very good suggestion that we would provide County Council with an outline, and with the council's permission, we would provide that through the Finance and Admin Committee for further discussion, knowing that it affects the corporation's overall finances and is not specific to roads and bridges, but much, a much broader discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Is there any further discussion before, oh, Counsel Sweet?
Yeah, just for clarity, could, could I get the, the recommendation or the read back? We've been bounced around a little bit, so that I'll understand. I, I think it's just to continue the process, and if that's the case, that, that's fine. But we're not doing anything beyond that, but maybe, maybe if we could get the recommendation read again. Thank you.
Ms. Grumps, could you do that, please?
Thank you, Warden. I apologize, if I may, Warden, that she is.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
She doesn't have a microphone accessible to her. So, if I may, the county, the County Council directs staff to investigate further information with respect to opportunities to address additional growth and cost recovery to, and yeah, we'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Is there any other further discussion? I don't, do not see any. Mr. Morrow, would you like to start the recorded vote, please, sir?
Thank you, Warden, and I just had to confirm with my colleague, Mr. Foss, that he is going to check my numbers as I go. So, if I may, Warden, I'll start. Counsel Bennett, for or against the resolution?
For.
Thank you. Counsel Rose, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counsel Donahue, for or against the resolution?
In favor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Ema, for or against?
For.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Grills, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counsel Hunt, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counsel Keller, for or against?
Or.
Thank you. Counsel Love, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counsel Lynch, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counsel Murphy, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counsel Pickett, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counsel Riguerre, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Warden Robinson, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counsel Sweet, for or against?
For.
Thank you. And Counsel TJ, for or against?
Against.
Thank you. The motion passes 185 to 8.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morrow. Now, I can no longer see Mr. Scanlon. Has he, has he left us? There, there he is, okay. I just wanted to thank you, and I just wanted to make sure I hadn't missed you before you left, so, thank you very, very much. Again, as, as many members of council have indicated, this has been extremely informative. I have learned so much about development charges, more than I really thought I wanted to, but I do know a lot, and again, very, very much appreciate all the work that you've done. So, thank you very much, sir.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
All right, we will proceed on with our agenda and committee reports, and the striking committee, Chair Donahue, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. Just bearing with me just a few slight changes from the actual report that was distributed to council. This is in fact a bylaw recommendation, so, to members of County Council, we, your striking committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Bylaws, one, ad hoc committee, CAO recruitment, resolution number ST-CC-22-04-04, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that an ad hoc CAO recruitment committee comprised of the warden as chair and counselor members Peter Ema, Bob Sweet, and Jennifer Murphy be formed, and that the committee establish a recruitment process to be approved by County Council at the April 27, 2022 meeting of council. The background, Madam Warden, is attached, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as chair, and committee members Grills, Murphy, Riguerre, Reinwald, and Warden Robinson.
Thank you very much, sir. Counsel, you've heard the, the recommendation, are there any comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Carried, thank you very much. Mr. Morrow, I'm going to have, ask you if you could please read the, the next two motions, because I do not have copies of them with me here.
Thank you, Warden. The, next up on the agenda would be bylaws, that the bylaws listed, listed on item 10 and attached Tier 2 as Schedule A on the County Council agenda dated April 20, be deemed read three times and passed.
Thank you very much. Mover to second, please. Moved by Counsel Lynch, seconded by Counselor Rose. Any comments? All in favor? Carried, thank you very much. Confirmatory bylaw, please.
Thank you, Warden, that, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of County Council, sorry, the council of the county of Renfrew at the meeting held on April 20, 2022 be now numbered, deemed read, three times and passed.
Thank you very much, sir. Mover into second, please. Moved by Counsel Riguerre, seconded by Counsel Sweet. Any comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Carried, thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Counsel TJ, Counsel Bennett, all in favor? Carried, thank you very much. Shaun, if you could take us offline, please?